And this is the Salina City Planning Commission, and I'm going to call this meeting to order. We will start tonight with a roll call. Thank you. And that brings us to approval of minutes from our last meeting. Everybody get a chance to look at them? Hi, Crystal. Crystal sent them out. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as read. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, vote aye, please.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Bringing us to our public hearing items, and our first item tonight is Application CU-19-2, which is filed by William Farley. This is a request for approval of a conditional use permit to establish and operate an electronic cigarette establishment in a C5 zoning district. The property's on the north side of West Crawford Street, east of Broadway, adjacent to Napa Auto Parts, in a building addressed to 1120 West Crawford Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board. John, if we can start with the aerial photo, and then we'll look at the elevation pictures just to establish the context of our location. So the tenant space in which the applicant is looking to establish a e-cigarettes, or electronic cigarette, or vape shop, is the former bail bonds and dog grooming shop on Crawford. It's highlighted in red here. It's directly adjacent to the Napa Auto Parts. To the east, we have the VFW. To the north, we have the Pace Mobile Home Park. And then a little bit further to the west, we have the Dollar Tree Store. And then on the south side of Crawford, we have the Sunset Plaza area. So the applicant, Mr. William Farley, is looking to occupy the vacant tenant space, which is a 24-by-30 building, in order to have an operation to sell vape materials and an e-cigarette store. So in 2014, when electronic cigarettes and vaping hit Salina, we didn't have anything that addressed the particular technology as it was somewhat new. And so what had happened is, we worked with the Planning Commission and City Commission. There was a moratorium involved, and through the public process, we created and established ordinances that pertain to the establishment of electronic cigarettes stores. And so in 2014, those new regulations required that vape shops obtain a conditional use permit on a case-by-case basis, because there was concern by both the Planning Commission and the governing body at the time, that a concentration of these uses in commercial business districts could generate controversy in the community and create a negative perception on the neighborhood. So that's what we're here today to talk about, is this particular location, and whether or not it is an appropriate location for an electronic cigarette establishment. We have reviewed, and the board has approved, five previous vape shops. The most recent one is Mr. Cody Pearson's at the Sunset Plaza, at the south end, where the old Radio Shack location was. And so we're kind of in the same neighborhood. We're about 420 feet northwest of where that other location would be. So the property was originally developed in 1957. That's when the 24-by-30 addition was added on to the Napa Building. And at the time, it was constructed for a retail pet shop. So it was a small retail shop, and it was required to have two off-street parking spaces that were head-in and back-out into Crawford. Now, these are pre-existing parking spaces that would not be allowed today, but as this is a pre-existing, non-conforming building, it was approved at that particular point in time. Another thing that is unique about this property, as it pertains to the zoning ordinances, in addition to having parking that pulls directly in and backs into the street, it also has a substandard setback, where it's only about 15 feet back from the property line, which today would not be acceptable. And it also predates the off-street parking regulations, even though there was required parking when it was built, we didn't have the off-street parking regulations that we have now in 1957. And it also predates the front yard landscaping requirement. So we do have 100% of the front yard paved, but those are non-conforming characteristics of the property, and are allowed to remain in perpetuity as long as the structure is maintained. So when we look at the welfare and convenience of the public, opponents of vaping point to nicotine levels and vaping products, and the addictive properties of nicotine, especially the potential exposure to minors. And typically, when we have these types of cases, we ask and request that the applicant clarify whether minors would be allowed in the proposed vape shop, or what the policies and procedures are that the applicant will have for his employees and for his store. Proponents of the e-cigarette industry argue that e-cigarettes are healthier, safer, and a better alternative to tobacco smoking. If so, this proposed electronic cigarette establishment could contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public by making this legal product available in a convenient, high-traffic retail location. And that's really what you're looking at, is, is this corridor that has a lot of mixed-use commercial, as well as some residential, further to the north, is it an appropriate location for another vape store? Impacts and injury on the surrounding property. This is a mixed retail corridor with different types of services, and food service and retail. And we do have two major arterials that we have Crawford that goes east and west, and we're not far from the Broadway corridor, just a little bit further to the west. Again, something that is of note is that the last vape store that was approved on April 19th, or February 19th of this year, is the Cody Pearson vape store that was on the south end of the Sunset Plaza East Building. So the applicant states that the particular building that they're looking to dwell and inhabit will not have any alterations or exterior structural changes. He's simply looking to move into the former retail shop and use it as is. And in looking at the public utilities and services, the site is currently serviced for all of the necessary public utilities, and we don't see any changes that would be necessary for the proposed use inside the building. Traffic and access, there are two parking stalls that would be required, that were required when it was built, and as the proposed vape store is a type of retail, we don't have a change of use as to how, compared to how the property was originally developed and how it has historically been used. So unless an addition or alteration is made to the building, the two existing off-street parking spaces will be sufficient. So, the commission's alternatives are listed on the top of page nine, and we also have a number of staff recommendations that we typically have when we talk about vape stores and these types of conditional uses. So the alternative one would be to approve the conditional use application filed by William Farley to allow him to open and operate the vape shop as submitted, upon findings that it meets all of the requirements. And number two, you could approve the conditional use permit application, subject to specific conditions and/or revisions to the plan for adding an electronic cigarette establishment in this tenant space. Three, you could postpone consideration if more information is needed. And lastly, you could deny the application if the required findings of fact cannot be made to your satisfaction. We do have a number of conditions that we would recommend if you choose to approve this application, and they are listed as 1 through 10. And I know historically, probably the one topic that we end up talking most about would be the aspect of minors, and how they would either be allowed into the building and onto the premises, or whether or not they won't be. And so that's something that we would like to hear the applicant talk to us about, and for you to be able to decide whether or not unaccompanied minors should be allowed to enter the premises, or if they should not be allowed at all. We've had it both ways, where some vape stores, we don't allow minors into the building, some we allow as long as they're occupied by an adult. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hurs. Are there questions for staff? Ms. Good?
On the Broadway corridor plan, do you remember what he sketched there?
There weren't any changes in this area. The changes that you saw for that plan, that study, really happened further to the north, where we have the Mobile Home Park area, and the potential redevelopment of that area. Because these properties are rather viable at the moment, there weren't any changes that were being proposed, but we're rather just trying to make sure that they remain viable and can contribute to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
He was showing the hope for clearance of the Mobile Home Park and redevelopment as some other form of housing in that area, but he left the most of the commercial uses there. He had some modifications in the parking lot area there for Sunset Plaza, because Dylan's was trying to accommodate a fuel service operation there, and so he was working to take that into account, but he didn't really show any changes to the commercial land uses as they presently exist.
Great.
Thank you. Other questions for staff? If not, are you Mr. Farley? Would you approach, please, and state your name and address, please?
My name is William Eugene Farley. My address is where I live.
Whatever address.
I live in Abilene, Kansas.
Thank you. Would you like to tell us a bit about what you're doing?
Sure. So I'm originally from Pittsburgh, Kansas. Lived in Manhattan the last few years, doing commercial roofing. Beautiful woman led me to Abilene, so I currently live in Abilene. Instead of making the drive to Manhattan and back every day, I decided to put down some roots. I opened up Willie's Vape Shop in Abilene, right there, catty corner from Sonic. I'm in the same as Ike's restaurant. I opened in July last year. Doing well. I had some concerns being a block and a half from the high school, but it's been going great. A lot of the kids that graduate usually go to Cloud Community College, it seems. And so I had a lot of them ask me to open one at Concordia. And I scouted the town, they didn't, you know, Concordia's bigger. I opened one in the strip mall there in October of last year. It's doing well. I have scouted Hayes, Lawrence, Great Benz, Salina. I get a lot of people that live in Salina that come to Abilene, because I'm more of a, I'm not a corporation. I have no plans on owning 10 or 20 stores. It's just kind of a small, you know, it's a small-feeling atmosphere, more hands-on. And I get a lot of people that enjoy that, and they've asked me to open one up in Salina. I did try to get on the main strip where Juicy's and Yogi's is, and of kind of, the people that own all of them, after talking with the owners of these way bigger vape stores, would not allow me to, for some reason or another, compete with any of these other vape shops. Too expensive to be closer to Walmart, too expensive down there on Ohio, where it seems like that part of town's growing. This part of town seemed kind of like it's dying. I'm really nervous about the trailer court, but the guy that owns this property assured me that he thinks the old lady's about to sell it. I don't know, but, you know, insurance is going to cost me a little more, from what I understand, being on this part of town. But I think, I don't know, I like the spot, I think I can do something with it. As far as minors?
Yes, could you address that? Because we have heard a number of these requests, and it is typical that we would like more elimination on minors, and how those things are handled, how foot traffic is handled, loitering, those sorts of things, whether or not there's going to be people standing or outside in the front of the building for long periods of time. Those are the questions that have come up repeatedly.
Okay. In Abilene, I've never had anybody loiter in front of my building. I mean, after high school lets out, you got a lot of people on foot that walk to Sonic, you know, the kids that don't have cars. But I've never had anybody loiter out, maybe it's because I'm next to a kind of a restaurant bar. Concordia, same way. I'm in the strip mall right next to Orsland's, I don't have any loitering. But with minors, I'm just going by what Topeka told me and the packet they gave me, they are allowed to come in with their parents, or of an adult, but they're not allowed to touch anything or try anything. I do get a lot of kids, when I first opened in Abilene, they come in, and if they're by themselves, I automatically ask for ID, because the point of being in there is to be able to try juices, or to see the equipment. Well, if you're underage, you're not even allowed to touch it. And I usually get the same thing, "Oh, I left it out in my car," and then I hear the tire squeak, and they take off, and they never come back. Same way in Concordia, it's usually when they walk in the door, "Hey, welcome to Willie's, can I see your ID?" Either they have it, or they don't. If they don't, they have to leave. I do get a lot of parents that have their kids with them, and they just come in to buy something, but the kids don't touch anything. And that's usually how it goes. I don't.
And you've seen staff recommendation, number one, that unaccompanied minors, under the age of 18, shall not be permitted to enter the premises.
Yes. This is the first time I've had, I'm kind of nervous. I've never had to do this before. I mean, obviously, whatever, every city's different, and whatever rules and regulations there are with the city, I mean, I'll comply.
Obviously, you can't control that they do come in, it's just the idea that if they are unaccompanied, that it's probably questionable whether they should be in there, and if they turn around and leave, that's fine, but that's primarily the idea, so that people don't get the impression that it's a place for minors to congregate, or whatever, because they can't legally purchase or sample the product, so.
When I first opened in Abilene, I did have a meeting with the high school, and I asked them what the main thing most kids were getting caught with, and it was the smallest thing you can buy, Jules. And so I don't carry Jules in any of my stores, just to help that. So I don't carry the Juul e-cigarettes in any of my locations, nor do I plan to, because that seems to be the smallest, most compact thing that all the kids are getting caught with, so.
Do you have plans for signage?
Yes, I do.
And what's your thoughts on that?
I usually use Vista Print. It's usually like a four-by-six, weatherproof, just banner that is put on the front of the building.
Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Farley?
The one thing, we have down there on Iron Street, there's a lot of kids loitering, you know, because it's a vape shop, a tattoo parlor, and I'm just myself concerned because of what the trailer park is back there. I don't know if there are any kids back there, but to me, that's not a real friendly place to put something like that in. I think you may have a lot of...
I think the Iron Street location has seating in front of it. I think that the Iron Street location has seating, doesn't it, on the sidewalk?
They have a bench on the sidewalk.
Right. Yeah, obviously, that encourages loitering. I assume that, you know, there won't be seating out here, but...
Well, the oddity is that you have a vape shop, but then you also have the tattoo shop, and a lot of people smoke outside on the sidewalk in front of the tattoo shop, because they can't smoke inside the tattoo shop. So you have smoking, and then you have a vape shop near where people are smoking, so.
Other questions?
Yeah. When you applied, did you know that there was going to be another vape shop across the street? And does that affect how you, I mean, from a business standpoint, I guess?
At first, I did not, but by the time I submitted my, everything that I'd heard, that someone was a step ahead of me, but it didn't deter me at all, so.
It looks like there's hard surface to the east of the building, is that correct?
Excuse me? Sorry.
It looks like there's hard surface there?
Yes.
And so we're concerned about the parking in front?
Well, there is a 38-foot-wide access easement, and that, if you go back to the big aerial photo, John, one of the unusual situations of the Mobile Home Park is that it's landlocked. And so the only access into the Mobile Home Park is the 38-foot-wide access easement, and by the terms of that access easement, it cannot be blocked by parked vehicles or standing vehicles. So while it's paved, it essentially serves as a private street, and so it can't be used for parking, or, but the only way in and out of the Mobile Home Park is by this road that comes out to Crawford. You can't, it doesn't, the property, there's a piece of the property, it's an appendage that does go to Broadway north of the old La Hacienda, but physically, the only way to get in and out of the Mobile Home Park is by that road. And so for emergency access, trash trucks, other things, it functions essentially as a private street.
So if it's 38-foot, there'd be enough room for parallel parking next to the building?
Potentially.
So that...
Yeah, you can't, no vehicles can park in the easement, and I am personally aware of that, because I've been subpoenaed to court to testify on it, and I have firsthand knowledge of what that easement means, so.
So all parking, I'm sorry, all parking is in the front of the building space?
The two recognized spaces are two head-in stalls that are right in front of the building, and so Mr. Baffa is correct that there is some paving, so theoretically, you could come in, turn around, and, you know, parallel park along the side of the building, as long as you were inside that red boundary there, but everything outside of that is the easement that's been dedicated to the Pace family for the park.
So it looks like that there's enough room for parallel parking next to the building?
I believe that you could probably put cars in a parallel fashion next to the east side of that building.
And so I would propose that those parking spaces would be marked, painted?
Right. Possibility of four cars parking, two in the front, two on the side.
Yeah.
We can work with Mr. Bosted or the owner to get that accomplished. The other thing that, and Mr. Freiberger is our liaison to the Board of Zoning Appeals, but Board of Zoning Appeals reviewed a case where it was proposed that this building was going to be torn down and replaced by an addition to the Napa Auto Parts store, and the Board of Zoning Appeals approved that, but it appears that the business owner didn't follow through with that particular expansion. But the Board of Zoning Appeals authorized that this piece be removed, and that the building be expanded with an addition in this area. And so it appears that the owner and the tenant didn't follow through with that plan. So, as Mr. Hurs mentioned, this building has been used by a variety of tenants since 1957.
And it meets parking requirements, that's, I guess, my question. And they back into the street from there?
Less than ideal, but grandfathered, and so Mr. Baffa's idea about parking along the side, at least if you parked along the side, you can most likely head back out into Crawford, instead of backing into Crawford. But those two stalls have always been used, and they are essentially grandfathered in.
Thank you. Other questions for the applicant? Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
We appreciate it. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone from the public that would like to speak on this agenda item, now would be your opportunity. Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the panel for discussion. Ladies and gentlemen? Spencer, Kate? Words of wisdom, thoughts?
No, not really.
Do, do either of your schools have policies on vaping? Do they treat that the same as smoking on school grounds?
Yeah, so what he said was 100% correct about the, the jeweling, at least, is that that's the thing that kids get caught with. They don't get caught with, like, anything else, really, so.
From a private school perspective, it's the same exact way as a public school where the jewel is the main item of attraction for students. So that's respectable that the jewel isn't allowed to be sold at the shop.
Thank you very much. Good insight.
Ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve application CU 19-2, subject to the recommendations by staff on page nine and 10.
Thank you.
And do you want that motion to include the marking of two parallel spaces?
If they're available.
If they're available.
I would like to see that, but I don't know that it has to be in the motion.
Okay.
If you can handle that.
Yeah, we will work with Mr. Bostedder on that if it's possible.
I just think that what would happen is cars would pull in the other way and park there, like they do over on the other side of the building. Excellent. So I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application CU 19-2 along with the 10 staff recommendations found on page nine and 10 of our staff report. All those in favor, vote aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
So for Mr. Farley's benefit, we'll go ahead and send you a letter summarizing today's approval, just so that you know you have that for your records.
There is a 14-day protest period, so it'll, it'll be two weeks before we can get that letter out to you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for coming today.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Am I free to go?
You are free to go. Yes, you are.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to suggest, since we have Mr. Gillum with us, that it's within the board's discretion to move item 3.3 ahead of item 3.2 on the agenda, so we could consider that and then have unfettered discussion on the comprehensive plan.
Certainly. So we will now advance to administrative item 3.3, which is to consider a request from Overland Property Group for an extension of the six-month time period for obtaining a building permit for Recollections Memory Care. This is a proposed memory care facility located at 620 East Elm Street, and we did approve a conditional use permit for this facility on August 21st of 2018.
And this is certainly not unprecedented. I told some people that we went back and looked and I think the record for this is the Emanuel Four Square Church on East Cloud that received six extensions from the Planning Commission for getting a building permit because they were having some fundraising challenges. But we have it built into our ordinance that when you get a conditional use permit, that the building has to take place within 180 days or at least a permit obtained. And some of the reasons for that is that you could have changes in the neighborhood or surrounding owners. You, you want to have conditions still be current, at least the conditions on which the, the permit was granted. And that same ordinance grants you, as the Planning Commission, the discretion to grant a 180-day extension without notice or hearing. So what we have here is a conditional use permit that I think you're familiar with. We have the Resident 600 Senior Apartments and the former Comm Care, which is now, you'll have to help me, the Central Kansas CKF moved there. And so in the neighborhood, and then the plan was to construct a memory care facility on that parcel directly to the east of Resident 600. That would, the plan that you reviewed looked like that. We'll let Mr. Gillum elaborate, but as he explained to us, they're working closely with memory care specialists and professionals to better detail the programs and services that they would offer. And depending on what programs and surfaces they offer, that's going to affect the interior floor plan and use of spaces and also affects the details and, and cost estimates for buildings. So they're, they're not prepared with final design plans to submit a building permit at this time. And they do plan to follow the site plan that was presented to you, but they are requesting additional time to finalize their design plans for the actual facility itself. So your options would be to grant them a six-month extension into September for the time period to obtain a building permit, or you could deny the applicant's request. If you deny the applicant's request, then at such time as they might come forward with their actual building plans, they would have to come back before you to get a reapproval or new approval. This would allow us to issue a building permit for the project anytime between now and the middle of September. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that you have, and certainly Mr. Gillum's here to answer questions from the architect's perspective.
Are there questions for staff? No? Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I appreciate you putting me in front of the agenda and Dean did a good job.
Of course.
As you all know, the, the healthcare industry is changing as much as the electronic industry, but we're trying to keep up and make sure that the service is in everything correct, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dean did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Is six months enough time?
I, I don't know. Can't answer that.
So what we would, what we would do if six months is not enough time, we would still, you would have the authority to grant further extensions, but what we would do is that we would notify the neighbors that, that here's the plans that were approved, they're requesting an extension. Instead of being an administrative item, it would be a public hearing item. But if, if they are back in September and there's still difficulties, then we would have an opportunity to bring it back for further extensions and that it would just be a public hearing item instead of an administrative item.
Thank you.
As I said, the Emanuel Four Square got six extensions, so it has, it has been done before, so.
Could I have a motion?
I move we approve application CU 18-6.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application. Where did we get six? Oh, I see. CU 18-6, although it's in favor, vote aye, please. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for coming, Mr. Gillum.
We'll get that too in writing, Jeff, just as a reminder, and then we'll just monitor the project and see how it's going, so.
Have a good evening. Which brings us back to our public hearing items and we'll resume with item 3.2, application M 19-3 filed by the Salina City Planning Commission to conduct its annual review of the Salina Comprehensive Plan.
So the idea is to have a unstructured and unfettered discussion about the comprehensive plan, priorities, implementation items, accomplishments, past changes that have been made since its inception. We're going to be putting up a lot of the maps that were involved and kind of bringing those up as a refresher. But in terms of the staff report, what we have done continuously since the plan was adopted is, starting on page two and over to page three, we have summarized all the, what we would call the formal amendments to the plan or land use map that have occurred since it was first adopted. And in 2018, there were three amendments that were reviewed and acted on, and one was at the northwest corner of Iron and Ohio where you see the building under construction. A portion of that was shown as future commercial, a portion of it was shown as future residential. As the commission, you recommended approval of expanding the commercial land use area in support of expanding the commercial zoning there. Over on the Foley, former Foley Equipment Site on North Broadway, that was shown as a future commercial corridor, and that was kind of questionable, given the historic use and the surrounding uses. So you changed that to future employment land use and the zoning was changed to industrial. And the former Foley Equipment Building at 529 North Broadway has been purchased by Mr. Ken Ritz, and he is using it for a slightly modified version of his images recycling that he had on Fourth Street. So Foley Equipment Building has been repurposed and purchased by Mr. Ritz. So that change has occurred there. And then there was a number of properties on the north side of East Pacific that was own commercial, had commercial buildings, and the, the plan, I believe, we meant to get it corrected before the plan was adopted, but it ended up showing as residential, some commercial properties. So those, that change was made. And if you recall, one of the things that we did, working with the Planning Commission, if you could go to the future land use map, John? We had a map that was not that one, the future land, that's the conflict map. So the future land use map, this was an in-house map that was developed in conjunction with the Planning Commission where in 2013, we reexamined every portion of the community and, and all we could describe is that the, the plan that was originally prepared by the consultants was prepared using a broad eight-inch paintbrush. And what we did was, we got out fine tip colored pins so that the boundaries that you see on there correspond to actually property boundaries and street boundaries and all. So this, this is an in-house map, and when we make changes or amendments, we have control over that and we can physically go in and, and fix or change the map. And then we also have summarized for you various implementation activities that we've undertaken since the plan was adopted. And two that occurred in 2018 were, you had a study session, a joint study session with the City Commission on housing initiatives that the city could undertake. And the city has created a land bank. And that land bank, the idea behind that is if there's donated or foreclosed upon properties or somebody has a dilapidated house and the house is torn down and they wish to donate that property to the land bank, they can do that. And then the land bank can buy, accept donations, sell, convey, assemble properties that then can be used by CHODO, the Housing Authority, other interested parties that, and the primary focus is on residential properties or vacant residential properties. So the land bank has been created. It doesn't have any properties in it yet, but it will be up and operational this year. And then if you recall, in December, in this room, we had a presentation of a conceptual master plan for improvements to the Broadway corridor, and that was also a joint study session with the City Commission. So, John, if you could go back to the future, or the urban service area map? So if we go from, to look at the overall big picture, everything on this map is what we consider to be the planning area, our planning area of interest for the city. And I believe that this over here is the landfill area. And then these areas that are in yellow are considered future residential growth areas, those purple potential industrial employment areas. And this, I'll call it lime green that runs through here, is, is the floodway area associated with the Saline River and Mulberry Creek. And so that is shown as a conservation area where we would not encourage extension of utilities or infrastructure of any kind. One item that we would point out is that right at this location here, Martha Tasker, the Director of Utilities and myself, met with the County Commission this morning and the city is proposing construction of a supplemental or what's known as the South Water Treatment Plant at that location. And the idea is not that the city is growing so fast that we need to have a second water plant, but it's to have a backup supply in case of drought because the, the wa, the plant downtown is heavily dependent on river water. And in 2006, the river almost went dry. And so we were greatly reduced in our treatment capacity. The other thing that came up was that the hospitals, some major industries asked the city what would happen should it, say, a tornado hit the city's water plant downtown? What would we do? And so basically, this was primarily going to function as a backup plant. But the, the city is, is looking to construct a, a treatment plant at the southeast corner of Waterwell in Ohio and looking to annex that into the city. And it's, it's located right there on the fringe. This is Waterwell Road. This is Ohio there. And so Saline County has adopted this exact same map. So the areas that we show residential, they show as residential. The areas we show as industrial, they show as industrial. The areas we show as conservation floodplain, they show as conservation floodplain. So the city and county are consistent on that theme.
Dean, this, Dean, this is a detail, but I'm wondering how you get the, shunt the material that has to be treated from one place to another? That's quite a distance.
The, in terms of the water?
The treatment. Oh, okay. It's freshwater. Sorry, I was thinking the other.
So if you're wondering about the origin of the term Waterwell Road, from Ohio going east over to the river, Waterwell Road is lined with water wells. And the city has acquired those well, some of them have always been there, but they weren't operational, but they're going to be reactivated. So one of the reasons that that location was chosen was the availability of water rights and groundwater there that can go to the plant. But the building that's there now was constructed during World War II, and it provided water to Camp Phillips, which is located where the city landfill is now. And so there's a major water line that runs on Waterwell Road across the interstate all the way out to the landfill where that tower is. So that, that will be the main distribution line coming out of this plant that will then go north to feed water towers throughout the community. go north to feed water towers throughout the community. But it, it will be, the raw water will come from wells. The treated water will be distributed in an existing line that exists in Waterwell John, if you could go to the area of change map. This map just shows the area identified as area of stability is areas that, at least at the time of the comprehensive plan, were parts of the community that were doing okay. The area of change is area that were identified as being in some economic distress where some assistance might be needed. So some of our, most of our economic development incentives are available in the area of change, but they're not available in the area of stability. So one of the reasons for this map is for that reason. But the reason we're putting it up on the screen is that this is one of those maps that was produced by the consultant, that we would like to work with the planning commission to have an in-house map that gets finalized with your input. And that is, it's not an urgent item, but it is on our to-do list to hopefully get most of these maps converted over with any changes that you see as relevant to an in-house produced map. And then, John, if you could go to impact streets and gateways. This is another map. We've had it up a lot and we've discussed it. But if I asked you as a commissioners, where, what do you find is the western gateway into the city at Crawford? And if I said, how far do you think the gateway extends? Some people have said the gateway extends all the way from the interstate to Broadway. Some people say it's right at the interchange. Some people say it goes farther west along Broadway. One of the things that we have again on our to-do list is to work with you as commissioners to say, right now, if there's a land use case that comes to you, or we're working with a property owner, we can't tell them that, well, your property is in a gateway area into the city because those little circles there don't really define what the gateway's in or what property is, is in or out. So again, that is something that we would like to work with you. And we probably couldn't bite them all off at once, but we would like to work with you to get your input on what you consider at West Crawford to be a gateway. You have the Magnolia Interchange Gateway, the Schilling Road Gateway, the Waterwell Road. And there was a lot of debate. Some people wanted State Street to be a gateway. Some people thought it was too not attractive enough and shouldn't be a gateway. But nonetheless, it's a way into town from the interstate. And then there was discussion about whether the gateway on Ohio was at the interstate or at the overpass. So we would like to work with you on this map as well so that this became an in-house map with planning commission input as to where that goes. The other thing that this map has that, as a staff, we don't think's going to happen, and we'd like your input as well, is that this map still shows the road that's going to go from Ninth and Cloud through the Kansas Wesleyan Campus over to Santa Fe. And so this little green thing here is that this, on this map, it recommends that a road be constructed from Ninth and Cloud diagonally over, connecting directly to Santa Fe to direct traffic up Santa Fe. And it wasn't very realistic at the time, and we still probably don't think it's very realistic. But if you don't think that's a good plan, then we should probably take it off the planned map.
What would have to be torn down?
Well, we, we, it would start where Stutzman's Garden Center is. There's a new Kansas Wesleyan Maintenance Facility that's directly north of Stutzman's. It would take that. There's houses on Highland. There's academic buildings on the campus. I mean, you'd have to visualize, you drive down Santa Fe where it terminates at Claflin, and you would have to extend a road diagonally from where Santa Fe terminates at a diagonal from there over to Ninth. And they, they, the plan shows essentially the same thing happening on Ninth Street where you, again, the idea, the concept was to take traffic coming into town from the north and divert it down Santa Fe and take traffic from the south and divert it down Santa Fe from Ninth Street. But planning staff doesn't see that as very realistic. And we're not, we're not necessarily big on having unrealistic things in a plan. So this, this is, that's another aspect of this map that we'd like to work with you to get, reflect the commission's current thinking.
Well, there wouldn't be too much in the way on the north side of that jog, would there be?
It's, it's hard, it's hard to figure out. Mr. Gillum's left, but as we estimate it, it might go right through the Jones Gillum Rens Architecture Office to come off of Ninth Street and diagonal over to Santa Fe. But you'd have Grand Avenue Methodist Church, you'd have housing, you'd have a number of things that would, would be in, in the way of that path. And so that just does not seem like something that, basically, this is saying that this is something the city should plan for or aspire to do. And if you don't agree with that, we shouldn't be showing it on this street plan. So that, that is an item that we have on our, our work list. And then also in your packet, we put the bicycle master plan and the functional street classification plan. The bicycle master plan, we did, this is an in-house map. We developed it ourselves in conjunction with our bicycle advisory committee and the planning commission. And we may be, we haven't had recent meetings with the bicycle advisory committee, but we'll be picking that up. And if, if they have any recommendations, then we'll bring those forward to you to update this map. But in terms of our focus today, we mostly wanted to bring the commission up to date on all the various maps and plan maps that are in the comprehensive plan. And then, John, it's not on the cheat sheet, but there was a sheet that Dustin sent to you that was labeled Exhibit A.
It'd be a PDF.
It's a, it should be a PDF image, John.
Can you go back to the parks map? There shows a park and Magnolia and Centennial, maybe? Yeah, Centennial?
You're saying a park map in the packet?
Yeah.
And that is on the very last page. So what, what it was doing here, it, we have some existing neighborhood park areas that are defined. And then this particular map also discussed the concept of linear parks. And linear parks are primarily trails that follow along a creek bed or some other feature. So the little yellow triangles there with the TH on them are potential trailheads, but the city doesn't really have any linear park except really the levee trail that connects the soccer complex with Bill Burke. That's the only thing that we would consider to be a linear park. But the item that you're referring to is where?
Is a large green area just by the airport, Magnolia and Centennial. I could see a trail, proposed trail there, but I can't see a park being there.
I think what they're identifying there is that there is a very large floodplain area and that, that dark green area is, it's not publicly owned. But what they're showing there is an area that is almost entirely floodplain or floodway. And it's currently open space. And I think they're suggesting that as a possible area for preservation of open space. A lot of that is in the conservation area because it's flood-prone. But the reference there to Schilling Park is reference to the, the little park area north of Schilling Elementary School. And the green line there, we have discussed before, but that is, envisions the potential for a rail-to-trail type project along that rail line. And that's, portions of that are active and portions of that have been turned over to private ownership outside our control. So the, the green line there corresponds with a rail line. But we could foresee some, some potential for linear park or open space along West Dry Creek there where there's floodplain area. But that, it's not under public ownership and it's also not currently within the city limits.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
So the, what? Okay. So we thought we could project it on the screen, but it is, it's attached as Exhibit A to your staff reports, the M-193 staff report. And it is labeled Exhibit A. And what, what it, we're trying to show you there is the different ways that the city has had plans that have been done since the comprehensive plan was adopted in 2010. And there's really four that would be of interest to you. And number one is the Smoky Hill River Renewal Master Plan. And that particular plan was approved and intended to be used as a guiding policy document for the old river channel area for future infrastructure improvements. And it was not adopted or made part of the comprehensive plan, although that was envisioned at one time. But it has been incorporated into the strategic plan. The second plan that came out of the comprehensive plan was the Strategic Housing Plan. And the governing body did adopt that plan. And it's supposed to be used as a guide for review and consideration of requests for financing or incentives and in land use applications. So as we look at residential subdivisions, as we look at multifamily housing, you as a body and us as a staff are supposed to be looking to that housing plan. But again, that was not adopted or made part of the comprehensive plan. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan is really more of a financing plan than it is what you'd call a spatial master plan. And it was not, it was not adopted. It was accepted. And it's to be used as a re, it's supposed to be referenced by staff, the governing body, when addressing parks and recreation issues, level of service, maintenance needs or other parks and recreation needs within the community. What it didn't do and doesn't really do is it doesn't identify areas within the community or outside the community that could be potential suitable park sites. And that is often a part of a recreation master plan, but it's not part of that particular plan. And the other one that is still being discussed internally by staff is the Broadway Boulevard Tomorrow Corridor Plan, which we had the study session on. And that plan has not been accepted or adopted by any public body. And we think, usually what happens is you have a study session and then the plan goes back forward. What is happening there is that the city commission is having their strategic planning session on April 15th. And they want to defer all discussions of the Broadway Corridor until after they have their strategic planning sessions. So there was an item that was on the city commission's agenda for further design and engineering work on the Broadway Corridor. And they postponed consideration of that until they could have their strategic planning meeting. So we don't know the status or what will be the status of the Broadway Corridor Plan until after they have that strategic planning session. But we had the study session. And unless that plan is, is endorsed, adopted, taken into consideration in some way, it could range from being adopted as part of the comprehensive plan to one of these other methods. But we wanted to outline for you, since the comprehensive plan was adopted, these are the four main planning initiatives that have occurred since then. The River Renewal Master Plan, the Housing Plan, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and the Broadway Tomorrow Plan. All of those are kind of offshoots and associated with the comprehensive plan. And so I think the final thing we will mention is that there, we tried to update you on page 16 and 17 of some of the things we've been doing. And we've spent a lot of time and resources on the Broadway Boulevard Corridor. That's consistent with the plan, but there's just not been an acceptance or adoptance of that RDG plan. Dustin and myself are still working on expanded lists for our sea rescaping and native plant listing. And we do plan to, at some point, get that back before you. But we would want to invite outside parties in our local landscape contractors and others to review and provide input on that. You have asked, and we will, at some point, have further discussions about that property that lies between the flood control levee and I-70. And we had a meeting before, a planning commission meeting with the North Salina Group that's interested in doing some more beautification and streetscape improvements to North Ninth Street. But one of the things we discussed was defining just what the boundaries of North Salina or North Town is and how that relates to the boundaries of downtown. And we would like to work with you to update some of our maps. And we do plan to bring back to you options for accessory dwelling units and other forms of housing. So we are open to any discussion item, question, anything that you have. It is a public hearing item, so if there's- It is a public hearing item, so if there's members of the public that want to speak, they're certainly welcome to. If there's homework items or things that you want us to look into and bring back to you as part of this review, you are free to continue this hearing to a future meeting to come back and discuss that. But this is for us to try to summarize for you the comprehensive planning activities and maps and for you to give us feedback or ask questions about what we've been working on.
Are we taking a vote on this item?
It is not an action item per se. It's just a direction item for you to identify any items you wish to have staff to follow up on or provide additional information about or schedule for future review or any of the above.
Could you elaborate a little more on number eight?
Number eight?
Number eight.
Identify additional.
Page 17.
What we have in the city's strategic plan is it asks staff and the planning commission to look at potential changes to the subdivision regulations that might be needed to implement concepts in the comprehensive plan. One of the things that we found, for better or worse, that some of the implementation items that were in the comprehensive plan were things that the city had already implemented. For instance, the comprehensive plan recommends that the city consider requiring sidewalks on streets in new subdivisions. And the city has required sidewalks on both sides of public streets in new subdivisions since 1980. And so we can't really do an amendment or an implementation item to require sidewalks when we have always already required sidewalks. We can we can look at different aspects of that, but when somebody puts a new unless they have a short cul-de-sac street, when they put a new subdivision in, they're required to put in sidewalks. One of the things that we changed, when it talks about amendments to the subdivision regulations, the subdivision regulations were amended so that now if you develop on a street like Markley Road or East Crawford or streets like that, and that is your perimeter street, that the developer has to put in a sidewalk even if it is a rural section street. And so the example I would give is, and we actually are going to get it on Markley, but when Magnolia Hills Estates was approved in 2005, we did not have a requirement in the subdivision regulations to put a sidewalk in on Markley until Markley was upgraded to city standards. On Wheatland Valley, which is the property to the north, there's a requirement there that that developer put in a sidewalk on Markley even if Markley remains just as it is today. And actually, what we're going to end up doing is putting in a hike bike path on Long Markley from Magnolia Hills Estates all the way up to the East Crawford rec area. So that would be an example of an amendment to the subdivision regulations that affects how subdivisions develop. And so we we changed how we finance and address improvements to perimeter streets. We took criteria in the comprehensive plan and made that review criteria for Platts. So we've incorporated a number of those things. But if there are other things that an eight and nine kind of go together, I will acknowledge that our stormwater detention features are not what you would call attractive. We try to keep them mowed and maintained and but they're not they're not aesthetic features per se, and they don't exactly because they're designed to be dry bottom ponds. They're not something that's going to support aquatic life or aquatic plants or things of that nature. But there was some discussion about are there ways to incorporate attractive options for stormwater detention in subdivisions? And that might be a change from having dry bottom ponds to wet bottom ponds that had aquatic plants and things of that nature. So those those would be examples. We have done a number of amendments to the subdivision regulations, but there if there are other things or things that you want us to bring back a summary of what we currently require, we'd be happy to do that. But.
I think that we need to revisit that topic over and over because we've had so many discussions about it. And at one point, of course, we had a number of subdivision plat request for approvals and we discussed it a lot more. But I haven't seen those requests recently. But nonetheless, I hate to see that discussion fall to the back of everything because we don't have anyone currently addressing the commission asking for subdivision Platts because there are a lot of other issues that we've talked about, whether it be turf size, lot size, footprint, walkability, auto dependency. You know, there's a whole lot of things that I really want us to continue to focus on when we look at subdivision and growth because it will affect the overall outcome in terms of what Salina looks like and how it serves its people. Commissioner Good, did you have a question?
I just a comment. I guess on on that note with subdivisions, I was surprised all these years or disappointed how the developers will take that option of not of I can't even explain what it is, but where they can pay so much per property and not put in a park, isn't it? Or a?
Yes.
And that's where I wondered.
The original I will I'll say the original staff proposal and I think the original planning commission recommendation was that the planning that the city could require as a condition of plat approval, the dedication of parkland. But the the code was amended before it was adopted to leave the option with the developer as to whether they want to dedicate or not. I will I will point out that the and I can't count how many times it was denied, but the planning commission denied a particular subdivision over a period of eight years because the comp plan showed a neighborhood park and the developer didn't want to dedicate the park. So we could not force, planning commission recognized they could not force the developer to dedicate the park. But the planning commission was not obliged to approve the plat either without the park. So in that case, the planning commission just kept denying approval of the plat. And then on the eighth try, the developer did dedicate the park and the plat did get approved and it's now developed and we have a neighborhood park. It's not a fully developed park, but it is 3.75 acres of parkland next to the levee.
I feel like the process would be better, though, if we had illuminated guidelines for some of these items so that it didn't take eight times of being rejected to create a pattern that was workable. Because we've talked a lot about things and staff has presented a lot of really wonderful materials, but I don't feel like we have brought them to the table and put them into concise forms that will allow us to encourage developers and subdivision plat people to use these things in their in their process. And I don't know how that works, Mr. Andrew. I don't know how we see that filter into the process to where other than I my personal feeling is that given economics and given other things that we will see, future Platts reduce the size of lots and such that they had planned to do because of sheer size and cost. But I'd like to see it happen in a more controlled manner.
Well, we can we can prepare for you, whether it's at a steady session or we can basically give you the outlines of the parameters of a typical residential subdivision as done today. Say, here's our minimum lot sizes, here's our minimum setbacks, and this is the pattern that you will see. So if you want to look at the lot sizes, if you want to look at the setbacks, if you want to look at those other options, whether it's clustering or smaller lots or other things, we can prepare that for you and provide you a summary of what the current minimum requirements are to see if you think those are excessive.
Yeah, I think that would be a great thing. And I think it would be good to maybe compare it like we do typically to some other communities and and people that maybe have more growth currently or may have a process for seeing more environmentally friendly and sustainable subdivision planning.
In that light, I'd like to commend Commissioner Good for saying that one of the options available to a developer is to put drainage swales in rather than curb and gutter. And I think then that would also reduce the need for stormwater detention ponds. And I think that too, that stormwater detention ponds could be made attractive with wild flowers, pollinator habitat, and reduce maintenance at the same time. Something to discuss.
Yeah, I just think these are things that we need concrete examples of in order for people to have the vision that's necessary to actually implement the change in structure.
And I didn't know if that green infrastructure could also be that neighborhood park. You know, can they serve the same purpose? And you guys are going to a conference next month?
In April, yes.
And will things like this be presented?
Yeah, typically in in looking at the sessions as and they have what they call mobile workshops. One of the ones I wanted to sign up for was a walking tour, looking at accessory dwelling unit examples, and it was already sold out. So I can't I can't go, but those are the types of things. But and we have our erosion and sediment control ordinance and things like that. And so at the same time, we're looking at it, you know, public works, people are attending conferences and looking at green infrastructure. But one of the problems that we had, and it's it's one of the most notable planning commissioner statements that we had after a long exhausting hearing, is that they they made the observation that residents were voting with their shovels. And so we tried the green infrastructure approach. We tried not having the curb and gutter and using the drainage swales along roadways. And what happened was the one, the edges of the roads eroded off. And the other thing that happened is that we had a subdivision where we had drainage swales and easements parallel to the road. And all the residents took their bobcats or shovels and they filled them all in. And so well, they they didn't want they they wanted to be able to mow out to the street and they didn't want those swales or ditches interfering with that. So they filled them all in. And so you had driveways with culverts in them and there was nothing on either side of the culvert because the culverts all got filled in. And so the what we did is we allowed developers to have a private street option with no curb and gutter and have what you call the rural design. And every instance where the planning commission approved that, the residents went out and filled in the ditches and swales. And then the water had no place to drain and then the water tore up the streets and none of the drainage system worked because the residents filled them all in.
And we need to get out there and plant wild flowers before they.
And so the the planning commission concluded that the residents had decided they didn't like that option and they had voted with their shovels to to fill it in. So the planning commission actually amended the standards to require curb and gutter because the other option did not work. And so we're certainly open to looking at that, but you you should know the the background on that is that it's you can we were amazed that new streets would go put in with green swales for drainage on both sides of them. And then when the city went out and the houses were built, all the residents had filled them in so they no longer carried water. I guess if you if you I can't guarantee that if you planted them with flowers or other types of vegetation that they still wouldn't it might make them more noticeable or not have a desire to mow. But what we learned was that the residents did not want a ditch or a swale or anything between their front of their house and the edge of the road so they could mow out to the edge.
And weed eat.
And so it it did not work. But there are certainly other options for how you do stormwater detention. The other thing that I have in parentheses there, who should maintain, one of the problems we have is that developers don't want to create or have a homeowners association to maintain the ponds. If, as you suggest, which is a good idea, to have a park or green space that goes with the pond, that that can make it be a more potentially viable thing. But the the one thing that the Parks Department doesn't want is it doesn't want to have a small public park in every. So one option is for the developers to put in open space that is, you know, managed by the residents of the subdivision. And we can look at options for that. Highland Meadows Hamlet has essentially private parks in their subdivision with walking trails and all those things. And those are all owned and maintained by the residents of the subdivision. They're not not part of the park system. So that's an example of green infrastructure.
Mr. Bossamire, did you want to speak?
Well, thank you for those people. No, thank you.
Okay. Well, I just didn't want you to be restlessly waiting to say something important.
I just elaborated about all the information that you guys have.
There's a lot of information.
Yeah.
I'm sure you recall that.
So I I believe that we could bring something back for a steady session that would cover the subdivision regulations, which tie directly to green infrastructure, which tie directly to the fact that we have stormwater detention basins that are and then we'll give you a refresher on the what we have is we have a parkland dedication ordinance that gives developers the option of paying a park fee instead of dedicating park land. But it it leaves the option with the developer and not the the city cannot require a dedication. It has to be negotiated.
And what is that fee?
The fee is $200 per house, per lot in a subdivision. So if you it's every time a building permit is issued in one of those subdivision, the $200 fee is collected. the $200 fee is collected and it goes into a, a fund. And we have something like seven neighborhood park areas, so we have seven different funds. And so, if your subdivision's in this area, the funds go into that, and it can only be spent in that area. And so, what, what the Parks Department has been doing is that they've been putting amenities or things in parks with the park funds, but they have never assembled enough money to go out and just buy, you know, a parcel for a park. So they focused on putting amenities in existing parks.
I have one more question, Mr. Andrew. On the beginning of this staff report of Salina City Planning Commission, it says that the Salinas previous comprehensive plan, which included a transportation plan. Now, obviously, I'm not about to let tonight slide over, because as you all know, I've only been using public transit since last December. So, I have found that we have some deficiencies in the system, and I've also had great dialogues with communities all over the state, this Department of Transportation, as people look at ways to bring and network everyone together. But in the statements, I still would like to see more emphasis on transit-oriented development overlaid over the entire process. So that subdivisions, you know, the problem that we're having right now, for example, as we look at putting bus shelters in locations, is that we can't actually put the bus shelter where people have offered the bus shelter because of infrastructure and existing sidewalk and existing pavement, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, had that had been planned effectively, we could have put a bus shelter there. So, I really discourage seeing things be erected and planned and developed without those components underlaid, so that as we expand transit, hopefully, the network will be in place. So, how are we going to deal with that, you know, at the planning level?
Well, and I, I can't, other than to say it, it wasn't completed, included or a component, what I can say that when I started work with the city, we had a comprehensive plan, and as part of that comprehensive plan, there was a transportation plan, and it was a multi-modal plan. And then in the 92 comprehensive plan, there was a transportation plan, and it was not as multi-modal, but it, it did address transportation issues separately. And what we did not have as part of the 2010 comprehensive plan, there is not a component within that that I would call a transportation plan. What I can inform you is that it is 2019, the plan, last plan was adopted in 2010. Salina has done a major update to their comprehensive plan about every 10 years on average. And the planning staff is trying to budget for and plan for a major update to the current comprehensive plan, and it would be, um, I think, important to staff and to the community, now that we have an up and running transit system, to make sure that if we do a major update to the comprehensive plan, that it include a transportation component that is vehicles, bicycles, pedestrians, and transit.
Ideally, yes.
So what we would ask the commission is to keep your eyes and ears open for updates that we'll be providing you on what that potential timeline might be, but it would be within the next one- to two-year horizon that we would be looking into a major update similar that was done in 2010. And that, that doesn't mean just adjustments or tweaking, that means is a comprehensive update to look at everything and all aspects of the 2010 plan.
Well, that gives us time to consider all of these things.
So, the, um, the takeaways, recognizing that we're working still on the accessory dwelling units and, and those types of housing, I will, I will point out, and again, it's not, um, it is not what some would consider the tiny homes, but it's what we refer to as micro mansions. But there was a subdivision approved in Wichita, and the lot sizes were 3,100 square feet. And in Salina, we don't have a zoning district or classification that you can apply for currently to have a platted lot that's 3,000 square feet. Our minimum is 6,000 square feet. So what we will do is try to prepare for you a steady session where we outline for you all the aspects of our developing a residential subdivision and how our current, um, I think it is fair to say that we have what could be described as cookie cutter subdivisions, and that's because we kind of have cookie cutter regulations that regulate how subdivisions are developed.
Exactly, and that's what I want to see changed. And we've had so much dialogue over the last four years about these subjects, and I think we've had wonderful creative ideas, both from staff and from the, the participants. So, I just don't want to lose momentum on that, because I think we're changing, times are changing, and we'll see a different approach to development now. Right.
So is there any other, we've mentioned the zero escaping in the native plant list. We don't want the Broadway corridor plan just to dangle out there.
No, that needs to come to fruition.
There wants to be some resolution of what the status of that is, and we have the subdivision regulations and green infrastructure. Is there anything else that you would like staff to follow up on? Or, or bring back additional information on?
That's a lot already.
When the Broadway study, the Park and Rec Advisory Board was told that the medians would be landscaped? And I thought that we took that out of the plan.
Many of, the plan calls for a lot of the asphalt median sections to be removed completely, but it also recommends that some near the intersections remain, but that they be landscaped and enhanced instead of remaining as asphalt. So the, the total amount of area would not be continuous median like you have on South Ninth Street or something, but the idea is, is that the portions that would remain near major intersections or where there's turn lanes, that those would be enhanced with landscaping and not just asphalt medians. So that, that was the idea.
And on that topic, I think it's vital that we take some action to establish that gateway from 35 to Broadway, if that's what the plan is, and I would think that would be the plan, given the work done on Broadway. I don't know that we need to look at every single gateway and define them at this point, but I do think we need to specify that corridor has potential for revitalization, and any kind of development done along that corridor needs to be kept in sync with what's happening at the Broadway level. I mean, we talked about this on that motel, for example, where they wanted to do the-
Mini storage?
The mini storage thing, and we didn't have the capability or the tool to limit it based on future development of the area. But I really think that we have got to do that as property along that corridor changes hands, and it is, it has been changing hand at a much higher rate since we started these discussions.
But that area doesn't have water or sewer, so it's probably not ideal place to be developed, anyway.
It's already developed.
On State Street?
Crawford.
We're talking Crawford from the interstate into Broadway.
All right, I thought you were talking about State.
Yeah, yeah, no, Crawford into the Broadway.
Yeah, I agree.
All the way down that strip. There's no purpose to develop all of that Broadway center as in, as a city center and then have a derelict approach to it from the highway.
Also, there are incentives and loan programs and grants that some cities give to revitalize business fronts, and we should look into that. I don't know where the money would come from, but...
Well, we do have a downtown facade grant program.
You do?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
And the money comes from the city of Salina, to Salina Downtown, Inc., so...
Well, we might want to consider extending that to the gateways.
Extending it.
Talking about that on Ninth Street, also kind of cleaning that up.
And back to the one last, I don't want to drag this out, but the last point I was going to make was the Ninth Street V year, you suggested that that be removed from the map. Is anyone here not agreeing that that's not going to be happening? That we're not going to go through the Kansas Wesleyan campus and through Highland and, um...
I agree with the south end. I wonder, though, is if there's a possibility of, on the north end, moving that further north? So there would be-
North of Pacific?
Well, it would have to move-
Oh, yeah, very, very much further north, past the, uh, past the dyke.
It would have to move past St. John's.
Yeah, because St. John's is the terminetation that where Santa Fe ends, so the-
And I don't see it going through the middle of St. John's, so...
Depending on what-
Well, but, yeah.
It doesn't have to be a diagonal. Can't, um, I was in Oakley recently, and I was, I, I just kept zigzagging to get into where this event was being held. And so I think you could make it, the main street seem like it's supposed to turn off at Ninth and go towards Santa Fe.
And I have a copy of the, I made reference in here to the 1982 transportation plan. In that plan, it showed a diagonal street that ran from the end of State Street, where it terminates at College, and runs at an angle through the residential area to Ash, so that you could come from State and run diagonally over to Ash without having to make the 90-degree jog. So, there, there seems, it just, it just happens a lot in, that you see in transportation studies or planning studies that the 90-degree turn is too difficult, and so we need to have the, the straight path. But it just, you know, our point is if a plan is supposed to be setting out, these are things that are goals or we're aspiring to, and if nobody's aspiring to run a road through the Kansas Wesleyan's campus, it doesn't seem like a good thing to have in a plan.
Yeah, it looks great on a map, but it won't happen. So, I think we really need to refocus on things that could happen and leave behind things that won't happen.
Well, when they tear down the grain bins or the elevators.
And, elevators, yeah. And then that linear park that some brilliant person mentioned by removing the railroad tracks downtown and creating a trail there.
Exactly.
You know, the other thing, and you can't see it because it's behind the scenes, but almost all the planning staff has been heavily involved in our downtown arts and entertainment ordinance discussions, and, and the idea behind that is anticipating completion of the streetscape improvements and all, and having a much higher level of street and sidewalk activity in the downtown area and having processes in place for that, whether it's food trucks, food carts, mobile vendors, street performers, all those types of things to be geared up for that. We had our first meeting last week. We have a stakeholder or steering committee of 35 members. All but one attended the first meeting. We had lots of discussions about what everybody perceives the boundary of downtown to be, and that's, that's one of the things that you kind of need to have a meeting of the minds on, where does downtown begin and end? And there is an open house just for members of the public or interested citizens on that project that will be held at the Chamber of Commerce Annex directly across the street here on the east side of Seventh Street, and it's going to run from 5:30 to 6:30 tomorrow evening, if you're interested. And I know the planning staff will be in attendance with our maps and other things, so if, if you want to come converse with us on that or other topics, but the focus there will be on the downtown area.
Thank you. Any other recommendations or thoughts, commissioners? Thank you for all your hard work.
Just a big kudos to planning staff.
Yes, definitely.
I mean, this is a lot of stuff, as the gentleman referred to. Yeah, you guys should pat yourselves on the back.
And this is just a little bit of all of it that we've heard and done and studied and considered. So, yes, definitely, excellent work.
For our other business, we are going to meet, um, the next meeting will be in the first week of April, and then the 16th, we're having no meeting because there's no planners that will be here, because we'll all be at the National Planning Conference. And, um, Monday, at the city commission meeting, they decided to change gears and purchase the property on Yost Drive for a police shooting range facility. But as we discussed with the memory care facility, your conditional use permit is good for six months, and the conditional use permit for Yost Drive has expired, and so that is likely to be coming back to you, but that will be coming back in May. And we're also working with the police department on plans for a secure parking facility north of the police station on North Tenth Street. That's likely to come before you at the same time in May. But the first meeting in April, um, we had a meeting with representatives of Verizon, and they are interested in gearing up for getting their 5G service in place in Salina, which may mean some more distributive antenna systems on power poles and poles around the city. And we need to update some things in our code on that, and we'll be discussing that at the April meeting. We'll be discussing signs that should and should not be allowed in the right-of-way on that date. And then, um, the skating rink on Marketplace has been purchased, and there is a plan to construct a automated car wash in that location. And a portion of the property they want to build on is still zoned multifamily residential, so they will have a request to rezone that, but it's directly south of the skating rink building, between that and Marketplace Apartments. But it, it very well could result in the loss of the skating rink building, so...
That's on Ohio, South Ohio.
It's on South Ninth, but technically Marketplace, which is parallel.
Or South Ninth, I'm sorry, yes, yes, both of the pumpkin thing.
So, that, that will be your, your three items for the 2nd of April. There'll be no meeting the 16th, and then the first meeting in May. There'll be no meeting the 16th, and then the first meeting in May, looks like we'll be targeting police department projects.
Exciting.
And I won't be here the first meeting in May.
We'll miss you. Oh, that would bring us to a public forum, which we have no public left, and that would bring us to adjournment. All right?
Same here.
Well, I think that's a motion then in a second.